Hi, I'm Jeremy Frostby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're the hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every day, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can view all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues that affect you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
We went to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for January 14, 2025. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting, and the second is please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Next, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Densler Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Baffedari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we move to item four, Public Appearances for Non-Agenda Items and New Appointments. We have 4.8. We need introduction to the Fitchburg Fire Lieutenant Matt Sutter and Scott Westphal. I don't know. Scott is not here, but yeah.
Good evening. So as part of the 2025 approved budget, the Fire Department was approved to promote two, or reclassify, I should say, two full-time firefighters to full-time lieutenants tonight. We have one of those lieutenants here, Lieutenant Matt Sutter, and he'll give you a short bio on his history with the Fire Department.
Good evening. Doing the numbers, this is my 21st year in the fire service. 18 of those years have been here in Pittsburgh. So I'm excited for this appointment and this promotion, and I look forward to what it's going to bring and what I can do for the position and for the department.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to the council because we approved this two reclassification in our 2025 budget. They asked for four. We couldn't add four, but you know, we had four, two, so. And I think this one is helping to the, you know, structure that the Fire Department were following the staffing model that they want to accomplish. So I want to say congratulations, you know, congratulations to Scott, you know. They are, you know, happy that you are being promoted and, you know, and continue working in the city of Fitchburg.
I'm excited as well.
And we'd like to thank Mayor and the council for your support and approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
So next, 4. B is a mayoral appointment for Mariah Richards. It's a library board, is a school representative. The term expired on April 21, 26, and this one is a short term due to a resignation. So we have Mariah here online. So hi, can you do an introduction?
Yeah, hi, my name is Mariah Richards. This is my 12th year in the Oregon School District, and I'm just excited for this opportunity to stay relevant in the Pittsburgh community. I work at Forest Edge in Pittsburgh, so I'm excited for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any question, comments?
I'll move approval of Mariah Richards for the library board.
Second.
All those in favor of the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose the motion carries. Okay, thank you, and congratulations, and thank you for serving, okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. So next, we move to the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Any question, comment about the consent agenda? If none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose the motion carries. So where we are now? Oh, I missed it. Okay, so we move to item six, and the Secretary of Report.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I hope you all had an enjoyable holiday season. We here at City Hall are all getting the 2025 wheels in motion here. Departments are taking a look at their programs, initiatives, and other daily operational items, and prioritizing how they'll be utilizing their available capacity as we continue on through the year. Just a few items of interest to share today. The library has installed a new story walk at McKee Farms Park. The book on the story walk is "I'm Going to Build a Snowman," which currently is proving at least a little bit challenging with the lack of snow. The temperature is cooperating, but encourage folks who are in the area of McKee Farms Park to take a walk and take a look at the story walk. The City Finance Department has been busy with property tax collection. Just a couple of figures related to the collections so far. Through the end of 2024, approximately $3.1 million in property tax collection, I'm sorry, $31 million in property tax collection was done, and a total to date has been about $53.6 million. As a reminder, we are collecting the tax bills for all of the taxing jurisdictions, so about 2/3 of that money is ultimately sent to the appropriate taxing jurisdictions. It is not all city revenue, so I definitely want to be clear about that. But it does certainly demonstrate the amount of energy and capacity that takes this time of year to go ahead and collect that revenue. And then finally, the 2025 sewer rates have been set by MMSD. It's an average of a 4.5% increase on residential properties. That will equate to a fixed charge increase of $2 per quarter and 15 cents per 1,000 gallons of water consumed or utilized. And again, that's on the residential side of things. So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions about those items or anything else, let me know.
Any question, comment?
Yeah, just a comment. We were concerned that it was going to be, when the MMSD guy was first here, you know, he was talking 10% or more, so. Not, you know, 4%, 4 and 1/2 is a lot, but it's certainly much easier to tolerate than a 10%. So I'm not sure what they did to get it down. I think they took out some capital projects, but I think that's a more reasonable number.
Yeah, it's been a bit of an ongoing process. I think the appearance you're referencing is a couple of years ago, when they talked about a potential 8% to 10% increase for the next six or seven years. And that was going to be the, excuse me, the average kind of across all of the communities that MMSD serves. Our rate, even in the first year, that increase was, I think, closer to 6%, so it was below their estimate. Not that 6% is necessarily enjoyable, but it was at least below estimate. In this most recent budget cycle, there were a number of municipalities who participated, Pittsburgh being one of them, in some conversations with MMSD about their continued budget planning process. And some adjustments were made to the 2025 budget based upon the feedback, which did result in one or two positions being delayed for hire, some capital projects being delayed, and a subsequent reduction in the overall increase to rates. They did also, just as a point of information, hire a new executive director. It was someone in leadership at MMSD who's been elevated to the executive director role, and I believe they started that role this week as well. So we'll be looking forward to meeting that individual and having some conversations about how we can continue to collaborate.
For the information.
Name or who that person was?
I will grab that and share that, yep.
Okay.
I was hoping that we could do some, I don't think I've seen it yet, any communication around the final Christmas tree pickup for folks. I think it's like the 20th of January that week, and instructions on how to put it out in the street, and that you have to have it out by 6:00 AM Monday because you don't know when the truck's coming by, so.
And some people are seeing in my blog, they are putting those trees in plastic bags.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Okay. Gabriella, are they still going to collect, given it's a holiday Monday, or does that still run?
I don't know, but I just know that you have to have them out by Monday morning, and they pick them up whenever they're available. And we took ours out last week because I, or this week, because we just couldn't have it in our house anymore. But you have to put it on top of the snow if it snows. Like, there's some rules around it, so good to have some communication. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Any other comments, questions for Chad? This is your opportunity. No? Okay. So we move to the mayor's report. So I have a couple of things. First, I want to say that our thought hearts are with the California and LA community, that they are facing devastating wildfires. And also to all the first responders, they are doing an excellent job to try to, you know, keep some sanity in what's happening, and this is a reminder of, you know, how vulnerable we are as a community, where nature is the force, you know, I mean, that we cannot control. And so I want to, has been, you know, very, for me, very challenging to watch how, you know, millions of people are being, you know, displaced and, you know, and housed, and who knows what is going to happen. And I don't want to be in those shoes of those mayor, but yeah, it's devastating. So, second, I, we have a good news today. We received, we were awarded, well, first of all, I'm going to go back. A couple of months ago, the Housing Department, in collaboration with Dane County, they put together a pro housing, $7 million grant to expand affordable housing. The city of Fitchburg participates in that collaboration with a matching of, you know, we use some of the land banking money, the $1 million, to get $1,600,000 additionally we get the grant, and, you know, today, the grant was awarded, so practically, we are gaining $600,000 more for our affordable housing fund. So I want to say thank you to Joyce, Laureen, and Mike, and the Dane County team, Joanna Cervantes, you know, to putting together this grant. It was approved, it's coming for the Senator Tommy Baldwin office, because the, you know, it was, I think it's federal money coming to the county, so. So that one is good news for us, starting the year with good news. Then I send you guys today, you know, something that John Crook sent me to me about how we did last year with our, you know, with permits, you know, number of residential homes that we built, and single family, and multifamily, and I shared that information with you. I think it was, it was a good year, isn't it? What do you think?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Yeah. So here today, new construction according to this, according to the permit, it was $196,000, million, 190 million. So this is, this is good. So I hope you can take a look at that, you know, and the last page, it mentioned all the numbers by category. So then, what else? So the other thing that the HNI grant application process is open, so you have, I think it was sent to all the non-for-profit organizations in the area, in Dane County, that they are doing work in Fitchburg, that they want to participate, and also if, you know, you can provide that to, the link to your list. What else? Today, in our staff meeting, it was shared that EMS call for 2024, we are more than 5,000 calls, so it was a record of calls. So they were very busy. What else did I did? The fire chief recruitment and the position was posted, what it was like, the first week of January, and it's going to be open until February 2nd, so we are recruiting for the new fire chief. We are in that process. Couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, I met with the group of mayor that I usually meet regularly. Here in Fitchburg, we host, we discuss several topics and concerns that we share, all the municipality, but one of the things that we are planning to do is to, we are scheduling meetings to talk to our state and rep and senator about, you know, how to move some of our local government issues. So they should be aware of what are the issues and what are the things that they can, how they can help us, you know, with levy limit, share revenue, and all of that, so. What else? And also I had the opportunity to participate. What the heck was that? Because maybe you are watching the news. The other thing, I was the keynote speaker for the Latino Chamber of Commerce last week. Yeah, they graduated, they have different programs, so they have two empresas, is how to open your own business. They have another one to futuro, is how they are training people to open their own daycare, you know, business. So there were more than 60 people that graduated, and it was a nice, you know, gathering, and, you know, and I, you know, my link with the Latin, I have a special link with that organization, and also they are here in Fitchburg, and, you know, it was a nice event. The other thing I want to mention to you is, since this one is our first meeting of the year, I am putting together what are the, my priorities, or list to do for this year. And I want to share this document with you, I shared this with Chad, with some of the staff today. And I think we have a lot of things on the, in the pipeline, you know. So, and I hope this, you know, some of these are project of initiative, they are coming from 2023, some of them for 24, but they need to be finalized in 25. And there is a couple of policies that we, we can discuss also for 25, but, so, you know, housing initiative and strategy, you know, we have a couple of things in the pipeline, you know, we need to finish the two neighborhood plans. The idea is to finish those in the first quarter of this year. Then we need to, I know, the comprehensive plan revision and the zoning code, the RFP, I see Deanna is working on that, and the idea to have the ready by the first quarter of this year. We have all this workforce housing project. We are working, the economic development team and the housing team are working on a developer roundtable. We are planning to do it in April of '25. We also have that efficiency navigator program, and also Laureen is, will update the housing plan this year. Then we have the city strategic plan that, you know, is going to be coming to you eventually, you know, I don't know, in February?
Perhaps.
Perhaps, okay. Then we have a lot of projects in the Parks Department. You know, we have Southdale Park, we can, they have, we finished to, you know, to finalize this project in summer of this year. We got Maggo Pickable Core, we got the Tower Hill Shelter, Maquis Shelter. We have several other projects, the Norris Sonner Prairie Park, you know, so we have a lot of good things coming in the pipeline. The Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, I know that the group is revising the strategic plan. Then we have all our road construction project. We know that it's coming phase two of the Zion Road, Fitchirona Road Reconstruction, some people are working on the Vision Zero Initiative. Communication outreach is another big, is very important to me, and I have a couple of, you know, initiatives, and how to be more proactive with the resident outreach, how to educate. One of the things that the referendum process taught me was that we need to do a better job in educating all our residents on how our city budget works, and how all the processes here inside City Hall work. And I think we need to do, you know, do like, you know, some educational video, short video. We are also working to have a communication plan. And I will recommend all of you elders, please go and have an interview by Jeremy, and, you know, and, you know, he always asking for that. And I do a monthly, you know, report with him, but also you as an elder should have like maybe once a quarter, once a month, say what is happening in your district, what you're doing. So it's another way for you to communicate with your resident. So I will encourage you to do that. Facility, we have a couple, you know, the police facility is our big project for '25. I think we are doing, the timeline is moving along. The idea is to start the bidding process in the summer and start the groundbreaking in the fall. We also had to start thinking about the design process for the renovation of City Hall, find a permanent solution for the trailer park, and determine what we're going to do with the teen center. If we are moving to phase three or no, I already have a conversation with Alder Maldonado about this topic. Other priorities, finalize the union contract, finalize the EMS service agreement. We had to work and draft the intergovernmental agreement with the Villas of Oregon, doing more advocacy in my part. And also, we are going to discuss that in the next, in the first meeting of the year, is find other revenue sources to fund the staffing needs that the referendum did not applaud. Because even though the referendum failed, you know, the needs are there. We need to find a way to fix this, okay? So regarding policy, other things that you will see coming to you, you know, I mentioned Vision Zero, the sustainability plan is coming too, workforce housing policies, that we're working on that, financial policies that are being reviewed, and the idea is that they are going to be in front of you before CIP. And then the other thing that I would like to, for the housing committee to start talking about is, you know, ATU, another, you know, if we can, you know, start having the conversation and determine if we can move forward with that. So this is some of the stuff that they are in the pipeline. I don't, I am not bringing anything new, because, you know, we had to, we have a lot of things that we need to work, and I don't think that we have the staff capacity and, you know, to move forward with new projects right now. But I think there are a lot of good things moving the pipeline for this year that they are going to come in front of you during this year. So any question, comment about this? When I finalize my draft, I want to share with you. Okay?
Yeah. Just a quick clarifying statement. The Healthy Neighborhood Initiative's grant, the business or nonprofit doesn't have to be in Fitchburg, it just has to serve residents of Fitchburg. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Any other question, comment? No? Okay. So next, we move to item eight, Commissions and Committees Report, and we will start with Plan Commission.
I'll start with the resolutions. I will move approval of Resolution R. 23424, approving final plat request, FP257524, by Sheri Yu, Agent for Fitchburg Lands LLC, to obtain final plat approval to replat a portion of the fourth addition to Terravessa to create 28 buildable lots on property located off Lacy Road.
Second.
So this plan did approve. This is a replat of some existing lots and a plat of some outlots. Everything looks good from a smart code perspective. There was some work needed to be done from staff perspective on park improvement fees before the permits were released, but that was, I'm sure that's probably already been resolved. Slightly, these are slightly smaller lots, so there's slightly higher density than what was originally platted. Basically going from 13 to 20 lots for the replat section, and then eight new lots, and these are mostly duplexes.
Okay. Any question, comment? Jay.
Are they zero lot line duplexes, or are they just a single duplex on one lot?
I believe there's zero lot line, but I would have to confirm with Deanna.
Yeah, she's online.
Oh.
We don't have the final plans for these yet, but I would expect that they would be essentially zero lot line duplexes, is what I would expect.
Okay.
Bill.
Yeah, so this is transect four, General Urban, which is mixed use but primarily residential. Are we, is this, tell me about the part that's not residential in this addition to Terravessa.
In this particular addition, this is the fourth addition that we're working in, and there is no commercial at this point proposed in this addition.
Any other comment, question? Okay, so all those in favor of Resolution R. 23424, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose, oh, sorry. Okay, so the resolution carries.
I got a couple more things.
Oh, yes, okay.
We reviewed the Dark Sky Ordinance, which is coming to council, I believe, in February. We also approved an architectural design review for Doxa Church expansion. They're adding some onto the building a little bit. And then we also approved a conditional use for blue plate catering. They just purchased that on Anton Drive, what used to be the Little Johns, they purchased that to create a catering kitchen, but they decided to create, they requested a conditional use to create a small event space that they'll use mostly for corporate events. We had some concerns about parking, and they addressed those, bringing it back from the November meeting to the December meeting, and so we approved that. And that, they're under construction, so it's a good company coming to Fitchburg. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So any question for Gabriella? No? Okay. So next, we move to the Board of Public Works.
I'll move approval of Resolution R. 10924, accepting subdivision improvements for phase two of the USONA Certified Survey Map.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this?
This was entered into in, I believe, originally 2021, and the work is now completed for the phase two. If you look in the packet, you'll see part of the trail on there, the phase two part of the trail, and not too much more. Tim, you have anything you wanted to add?
I do not.
Thank you. Any question, comment? No? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R. 10924, say aye.
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 And you pose, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R. 21724, granting underground electric easement on Outlet Five in Crescent Crossing.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan approved.
Thank you. What is this?
They need electric easement between Seminole and Fitchirona Road. There's streetlights and a flashing, a flashing crossing light, and so we need a, we need an easement in this Outlet Five to supply those, the electric for those things.
Okay. Any comments, question? Here none? All those in favor of Resolution R. 21724, say aye.
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 And you pose, the motion carries. Next one.
Next, the move approval of Resolution R. 22324, authorizing 2025 through 2029 man swap intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Did Resource Conservation Commission?
Resource Conservation Commission approved with one minor amendment to the wording in the, in the resolution.
Where is that? It's coming here? So what is the resolution that we are moving?
We'll call it a friendly amendment. The first whereas clause refers to the municipal separate storm sewer permit rather than the municipal separate storm sewer system permit. So there's an M followed by three S's, but the, and then parenthetically, it says MS4. So the word system should appear in there, municipal separate storm sewer system.
Where you, which one? Where you, which one?
The first whereas.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, 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 okay.
Accept that amendment.
Okay. We don't need to, oh, really? This is an amendment?
Friendly.
Okay, so all those in favor of the...
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say, yes? Okay. So this now is approving the resolution as amended.
Before...
Okay, so...
Followed in the amendment, and then come back to me.
Even though it's a friendly amendment?
All those in favor of the amendments, the friendly amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment carries.
So this is for, this is for education and outreach for stormwater, stormwater permit. So they, that's what, it's roughly 11,000 this year, goes up to 13,000 over the course, and it helps us, like I say, education outreach to meet, to meet our permit, permit requirements, and a little bit of advertising or, you know, advertising and education, I guess.
And this one is the Madison, this is what I learned today from Tim. This is the Madison Metropolitan Sewer Partnership? Are you missing anything? It's on what? Partnership? Okay.
Stormwater, yeah.
Okay.
And there's 17 communities or, 17 communities or townships. And like I say, our, our share is, well, 11,000 this year, Madison's is about, you know, four times that much.
Okay. Any question, comment? So, so now all those in favor of the amended resolutions, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the resolution carries. Okay.
Next, I move approval of Resolution R 22524, accepting, I'm sorry.
These are next two items for postponement. The Board of Public Works is my recollection.
Thank you, I was just looking through my notes. I'll move, I'll move postponement of Resolution R 22524.
Second.
Aldo Herbst, do you mind clarifying the date of postponement? I believe we're looking at January 28th?
Yeah, January 27th.
Eight.
Twenty-eighth for the next council meeting.
Twenty-seventh goes to you, yeah.
Yeah, next meeting on the 28th of, of...
Okay. All those in favor of postponing Resolution R dash 225 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The next one.
Next, I move postponement of Resolution R 22824, I believe also to the January 28th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of postponing Resolution R dash 228 dash 24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is postponed. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R 23224, 2025 annual chemical purchases from Martel Water Treatment Incorporated.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved with an amendment, and I would like to move to amend the resolution to direct staff to correct the preapproval form. The, it was mistakenly put as chlorine and fluoride when it's actually this chemical purchases for phosphate.
Phosphate, yeah. Second.
Thank you, Gabriela.
All those in favor of the amended resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So now we need to discuss.
Any discussion?
As Gabriela mentioned, this is for phosphates.
Phosphate?
That we put in the water as part of the treatment process.
Okay.
Dave, could you tell the class why we do that?
I will let, I will let Tim do that because he explained it last time, but I think he'll do a better job again.
Yes, so phosphate is a corrosion inhibitor. It binds with the metal ions, preventing them from precipitating out and corroding the pipes, both the water distribution system pipes in our system, and then also internal plumbing pipes for the businesses and residents of the city.
Good to know. I didn't know that. Okay.
That's interesting.
Any other comment, questions? So all those in favor of the amended resolution, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R 23324, 2025 annual chemical purchases from Hawkins Chemical Incorporated.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay. What is this?
I believe this is our chlorine and chlorine this time.
Okay, this is what we do every year.
Yes.
Okay. Any question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R dash 233 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries.
Madam Mayor, before we move off, you know, in your, we asked departments to set goals, you know, we mentioned this to Tim, we, we'd like a, a very short, you know, Public Works is doing many things, you know, and that goal list could be 25. We asked him for four. Pick four things, you know, we know they'll be doing four, but pick four that we can, we can be focused on, so. No, it's not like he's got enough on his plate, but we put that one on him and to ask him to come back to the Public Works with that.
Okay. And you can share with us when, okay?
We will.
Okay. Okay. And this is the other thing that I forgot to mention that I am doing. I am going through each commission and committee to talk about what are the priority for the year that they have, to see if they align with our priority, and also to be sure that, you know. So if there's something new, we are aware. So, okay, Parks Commission.
For the Board, Mayor Julio came and she, she talked to us and asked us to set goals for the Parks Department also. And so we are, we are working on that, hopefully in either earlier in February or relatively short, we'll have a goal. But I can tell you one that we're very keen on is, we have a lot of, we have a lot of park facilities, you know, whether it's playgrounds, buildings, and they all have lifetimes. You know, say playground equipment is 25 years, shelter or whatever, and we're going to try to get a, this is a big, this is a big reach, but the age of the equipment out there, when, when would it be due? And see if we can come up with a good number. What is going to be our maintenance, our equipment, not, you know, not routine maintenance, but equipment replacement costs for our parks moving, moving forward, you know, annualized. And so we're going to be, we're going to be taking that, that up. And we feel that number needs to be, needs to be known. Either we're all going to gasp, which, which we might, and then find a way to deal with it, but, you know, as you're all aware, failure to plan is planning to fail, so that, that will be one on our, one on our list. We talked to Scott about that last time.
But I think we are doing some planning, financial plan, because we do the replacement fund, and I think Misty keep track of some of those replacement fund. I don't know if all of them, but, you know what I mean, but I think we keep track of the, I think the biggest one, you know what I mean?
We want a little deeper dive, too.
Yeah, and I think we're, actually, I know we're working on that already, so we should be able to provide a relatively deep inventory of the amenities and facilities and things within our park system, and an estimated useful life for those particular amenities, and an estimated replacement cost that probably will be a rather significant number.
I expect, yeah, I expect.
With that factor in, like, sometimes stuff gets broken, damaged, like a swing might, chain might pop off or...
We would, we have money set aside in the operating budget to cover those sorts of maintenance, things that would pop up throughout the course of a season, so, yeah, we would exclude that from that inventory that we'd be completing for the budget planning purpose, purposes. But certainly, we do set aside money in every operating budget for those sorts of unexpected maintenance issues.
I would also add, you know, the mayor directed us, you know, there's some things out there, kind of wish list, there's no money to, she has to set those aside, you know, stay focused on things, concrete things that we can get done, you know, this year is what she asked us to, to have, you know, eye on the ball for this year, and so we're taking that direction.
Okay, thank you for the update, Dave. Library Board.
I'll send a report.
Okay, and then we move to Commission of Edgingwell.
Yes, give me one second, hold on, sorry.
You have two resolutions.
For the Committee of Edgingwell, I just wanted to report and talk about just some things happening at the senior center. Currently, they are looking for individuals to be driver escorts, and kind of what that would look like is someone to be able to help the center and drive the seniors to certain appointments that they have, to and from, in a safe manner. So they are doing those right now. And then also just continue to stress and put forth the luncheon learns that they have every Wednesday, on Wednesdays of the month. There's a different speaker, if you can come out, it's always good.
Can you send us the schedule, you know, to the council, because, you know, to put it on my calendar, to see?
Yeah, okay, I'll get it from, because Janice, Ms. Hughes, schedules those, so I'll get it from her, let you know, I'll know to like, kind of get them on a calendar invite that we can send about to everybody. Sounds good. But other than that, that concludes the report for the, the senior center right now.
Okay, so you need to move with the two resolutions that you have.
So I move Resolution R dash 215 dash 24.
Second.
Did the Commission of Edgingwell approve?
Yes.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
It's basically just funding that covers the percentage of the cost that needs to be provided for the case management and nutritious services position provided for the Fitchburg adults 60 and over for the fiscal year of 2025.
Okay, so this is the standard accounting contract, so. Okay, any question, comment? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 215 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the resolution carries. Next one.
All righty, and the next one is Resolution R dash 23024.
Second.
Did the Commission of Edgingwell approve?
Yes.
Park Commission?
Park Commission approved.
Finance?
Finance approved.
What is this?
Yes, so this is using approved funding from the CIP for a project identified as number 6354, for tables and chairs used in the upper level of the community center that will be replaced. Due to the age of the table and the chairs, combined with the frequent usage of city departments as well as rentals, replacement of these items are necessary.
Okay. Any question, comment? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 230 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the resolution carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to RCC.
Resource Conservation Commission met last night, and we had a discussion topic. The FGM Architects were, were with us, talking about the sustainability features of the police facility, which includes major components, geothermal heating and cooling with four major sections of the building. Each one has its own fan coil unit with an energy recovery ventilator. There are tweaks to the overall design, so some of the parking has been reduced, and an extension on the north side of the building is going forward, so there's additional room available for solar panels there. And we learned an interesting fact, when they did their energy modeling, they found out that if they add insulation to the roof, it actually causes the building to have increased energy consumption. Because inside that building, which is sealed up fairly tightly, we have equipment and people who are generating heat. And if we add too much insulation, that heat builds up and we require more cooling.
Oh. So what we're going to do?
Just not use as much insulation in the roof.
Okay.
Well, we could just ban people from the building.
We just need more cool people.
A lot of computer use, you know, when I used to work. They were air conditioning 365 days a year.
Wow.
With all the computers and things in it.
And interrogation lights.
Yeah. Forgot about those. Mentioned that to the chief.
We also discussed the outdoor lighting, dark sky ordinance, the man swap intergovernmental agreement, the RCC annual report, and the 2025 event planning. There was an interesting update that Ben, Environmental Engineer Ben Schulte shared with us on the salt dispenser calibration units that go with our Public Works trucks. The new calibration requires only one person in five minutes, whereas previously, it took half an hour and two people. So the salt dispensers will be presumably at least as, as efficient as they had been in the past, but they'll save us darn near an hour of man time.
Oh, good. Okay, that's it?
Yes.
Thank you. Transportation and Transit Commission?
TTC met last Thursday, and we had a discussion on the Greater Madison MPO's draft transit development plan. And Ross will be, well, Ross is collecting feedback and will send that to the MPO. Major ideas were, hey, there's just not enough service. Let's see if we can get more service in the city of Fitchburg and, you know, seek additional funding sources to increase coverage and ridership rather than, you know, reducing routes in favor of ridership or providing more coverage but less frequent service elsewhere. An interesting tool that we found in the documentation was Pedestrian Facilities GIS map that covers the, you know, the MPO's entire region, including the city of Fitchburg. And this has every sidewalk and multi-use path, and then even down to the individual curb ramps, and they'll have comments on there telling you whether they are ADA compliant. So it's a fairly comprehensive mapping tool. One thing that jumped out at me in that document was they showed a, a heat map of paratransit ridership, and there were three spots that were especially heavy users of paratransit. One of them was within the city of Fitchburg, near the, basically centered on Fishhatry Road and Post Road.
But we don't have paratransit.
We have paratransit along that section because of Route B.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't know that, okay.
And there was also, you know, this was new to me, there was a list of specialized transportation services for the elderly, disabled, and veterans. I forwarded that information on to Donald, and I presume Jill is intimately familiar with these things, but probably a good reference for everybody on the commission.
Absolutely. Thanks again for that, too.
And that's it for me.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Sida?
We are meeting next week.
Okay. Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee?
We also meet next week on the 21st at 4:00 P.M.
Okay. Do you know what you're going to discuss in the meeting, or no? No?
No, not off the top of my head.
Bike and pedestrian commission?
We meet next month. We're also going to be searching for a subcommittee meeting time in March to be able to work on the bike and pedestrian plan.
EMS Commission?
I'll send a report.
Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
We met last week, and the Healthy Neighborhood Grant application is currently available. It's on the city's website, so any organizations out there that are interested in providing some services to our neighborhoods are welcome to apply, and we will be reviewing those applications in March. We also, we spent most of our meeting talking about the city's, the city's strategic plan and the three sections of the plan that affect our committee. And one of the, one of the things that's happening in our committee is, this committee was originally designed mainly just to disperse the grants, to review the grant applications, disperse the grants, but it turns out that there's a lot of things that members of, of this committee are interested in, and so we're starting to experience a little bit of scope creep as, you know, to make... make these neighborhoods healthy, it's not just enough to disperse these grants, but we also need to talk about housing policies. We need to talk about food security. We need to talk about a lot of things. So some of that is reflected in the changes we are recommending to the three sections of the city's strategic plan. There is a different strategic plan out there for the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, and that plan was done in 2019, and that plan is really pretty much a disaster. So we are in the process, we'll be, I think at our next meeting, we'll be going through most of that. It was rather astounding to most of the members of the committee that with all the stuff that we've seen happening with the grant program and with other things going on, there was no mention in there of transportation, of housing security, and food security, which are kind of the three things that are the most important thing to have a healthy neighborhood. So we're gonna be going through that strategic plan. I'm not sure why that document came about, and I don't know who drafted it. I don't know where it came from. It's dated October 2019, and essentially that document must have been written by people who had no idea what life is like in these neighborhoods. So, so we are going to correct that and make some things more usable. And I think ultimately, it's, one of the things that we talked about is that within our committee, we, there needs to be some more cross pollination between some of the city committees, between transportation and transit, the Bike and Ped Commission, the Housing Committee, and SIDA, and possibly a couple of others that we've mentioned briefly, that, you know, maybe these committees need to get together and meet once a year to kind of bring all the ideas, the stuff they're working on together, and make sure we're all pushing in the right direction instead of, you know, coming up with different ideas that may not have anything to do with each other. So I think through ours, through the Healthy Neighborhoods Strategic Plan, we're gonna come up with some ideas that are gonna be useful. But I'm really thankful for the members we have on the committee right now, because all of them are very engaged in this process, and they are, they're, they have ideas. And because we have people who live in each of these neighborhoods, they kind of know what life is like. So hopefully, we will have some more recommendations for the council. And that's all I have.
Okay. So I, thank you for your feedback. I wouldn't call that is a disaster. I was part of the original committee, and I think maybe, you know, it was, you know, the launching of this program, and this is what we thought it was the best thing at that time. You know what I mean? But I wouldn't call it a disaster. It was, you know, maybe it was an incomplete, or we didn't look at the other options, you know, or, you know. But I agree with you that it had to be an integral plan of working with the other commission about the transit, the housing, the food, you know, they are all valid, all valid, you know, input. But I wouldn't say that is a disaster. I know the person who put it together, he was a former city employee, and he really cared about this, you know. So, so that's it. That was my comment. But I think you make a good point about working more in a holistic way, you know what I mean? So, okay. Housing Advisory Committee?
We canceled our meeting. Weren't prepared for it, so it's gonna, we're meeting it next on February 10th.
Okay. Landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
We met last week? Yeah, last week. And had a good meeting and a good conversation. One of the things we discussed was actually the $25,000 grant that we got from the Wisconsin DNR to write a forestry strategic management plan. And Jay, I'm actually super excited to hear about the strategic plan from the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, because one of the things I brought up was these, these other groups that like, I think would be super cool to get their feedback on certain things. So, for example, we know there's a huge disparity between tree canopies in lower-income neighborhoods and higher-income neighborhoods, and the effect that trees can have and tree coverage can have on things like utility bills and keeping streets cooler and making safer spaces. And so we kind of discussed that. I brought that up, that like, I think HNI should weigh in, or at least be informed about, maybe it's not a full, like, in a Raci diagram, maybe it's not responsible, but maybe it's informed, because I think that part is really important. So, super excited to hear that you're talking about that. We also talked about a resolution we'll be bringing forward to kind of reengage in some standard forest management that we had paused previously, and we'll be bringing forward so that passed the Tree Committee and is going to the Parks Commission next. I believe that next meeting is in February, if I'm not mistaken. So it will come to council after that Parks Committee meeting.
Okay.
And then we talked about some exciting trees being planted on Arbor Day in the Hugel-Jamstown Park, and some awesome active management that's being done. And lastly, just a shout out to Sue Fiber, who wrote an article and is keeping everyone updated in the Fitchburg Star.
Thank you.
Could I just?
Oh, yeah.
Forestry, are you talking about the McKee or McGaw Park?
That's correct. Zones like one in five that haven't been managed for over five years.
Yeah, but, thank you.
Of course.
If I may also add a little bit of additional information, the ultimate goal coming out of that, too, would develop a citywide forestry woodlot management guidelines. Obviously, they would be utilized in McGaw Park, but also in any other woodlot the city has under its control.
That's a great point. Thank you, Chad.
Jay?
Yeah. So as we were going through the 2019 strategic plan, it starts out with this section called pillars, which it felt were the five most important things in these neighborhoods.
You're talking about HNI right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Keep going.
And we expanded that to 12. Well, we haven't officially yet, but we've, we've talked about that, because there's a lot of things that weren't covered. But one of the things that we, that we've talked about a little bit is healthy landscapes. And so that includes not just trees, but, you know, what do buildings look like? How do we, how do we lay out, you know, if there's gonna be new development or redevelopment in these neighborhoods, how do we lay them out so that they create a safer environment?
Oh, that's very cool.
And things like, you know, what kinds of neighborhood services do we need?
Sure.
Because, you know, you look at, you look at a number of our neighborhoods that are, that are involved in this program, and there's just not much going on other than just a bunch of housing, which is fine. Housing is needed. It's necessary. But we need other things, too, to make for the, the healthy neighborhood.
If you do incorporate anything with like trees or additional shrubbery, forestry, Anna Healy, I'm sure I'm volunteering her, but she's super passionate about trees and all of that, so I'm sure she'd be happy to weigh into from her kind of expert perspective. Very cool. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And then we have the Ad hoc Community Equity Committee.
No update at the current moment. We'll have another, probably more substantial update after the next meeting, which is the twenty, the next, hold on.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from any other commission and committees? We don't have, I don't know. Jim, do you have anything to report for the police facility or no?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. So then we move to the standing committees, and then finance? Anything else to report?
The only additional thing was that since the year is wrapped up, they're kind of closing the books and preparing for the audit. So, that's all.
Thank you. Personnel Committee?
Nothing substantial to report right now, other than there were a few classifications, changes at the last meeting, but that meeting ended up having to be moved to Quorum, so we are meeting again on Thursday at 5:00 P.M. So I have a further update after the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety and Human Services?
We don't have anything to report.
Okay. Well, then we move to unfinished business. We don't have anything. New business? No. And then we go to the Alder District reports. We will start with District One.
Joe may have this on his list, too. On Saturday, Allied Dunsmarsh, at Boys and Girls, we have a Food is Life event. I think you, most council members received that notice and the email about that event. Also, our Allied Drive Dunsmarsh Neighborhood Association meeting is Thursday on 5:00, and I will make sure to reinforce, you know, that they know about the HNI grants on that. We've tentatively scheduled April 12th for Free Bikes for Kids event. We'll hold it in New Fountains this year. I want to thank Public Works. They got a speedboard on Williamsburg. There's been a lot of speeding there, and I don't, I don't know if he's on anymore. Chad, did you hear anything on January 1st? Bunch of crashes on Seminole Highway near the, near the curve. And I, I reached out to Mark. He didn't know anything about it, and I had several people complain, I don't know anything. You know, people were...
I saw, I saw a media release that had been put out by the Police Department regarding, I believe, an OWI crash that had happened.
Oh, so it wasn't, it was an OWI.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I had a neighbor say that we weren't taking care of the streets, and snow was falling off the trees, and we gotta cut the trees back. And I'm like, no, we're not cutting any trees. I don't know. Well, all right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Question for Dave. On that Free Bikes for Kids event?
Yeah.
So the organization that used to be called Free Bikes for Kids is now just called Bikes for Kids, and it's my understanding that going forward, whatever bikes they distribute, they want like $20 per bike.
They want $20 a bike, yes.
Okay. So you're aware of that. There's an organization in Madison called, that used to be called Free Bikes for Kids, and they used to give out free bikes for kids. They're just called Bikes for Kids now, and at some point in the very recent past, they put in a new policy that said whatever bikes they give out, they want $20 reimbursement for each one. So that, as long as you're aware of that.
No, I'm aware. I've, I've been in contact with them. What they ran into is many, many nonprofits would sign up to get bikes, and then they never showed up.
Oh.
And, you know, well, if you have to put a little money, you know, you have to put a modest amount down, you'll get better, you know, people take it more seriously. So, so, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. It's, which I think is a reasonable, you know, to get a kid a bike is a reasonable amount, and, and I'm not, I, you know, we don't anticipate any problem coming up with the, with the money for 50 or 60 bikes.
Okay. And then I guess one other thing is coordinate with Bike Fitchburg on the, on the, on the bike lights.
That's my, they did a great job for us last year, so we'll, we'll do that again this year. That's, that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
No, I, the event on Saturday, I was gonna mention, but Dave did.
District Two?
Just a couple of things. I see that where Mod Pizza used to be in Cahill, Maine, there is now a Shopko Optical. So that's a new business in the, in the area.
Is it open?
I didn't look that far. I saw the sign from the street. Shopko Optical, yeah. And this Friday, at the atrium on South Park Street, there is an event put on by Just Dane, Breaking Barriers, Police Discretion, Charging Disparities in Racial Dynamics and Criminal Justice. That's 5:00 to 8:30 P.M. And the last thing, this, this spans all of our districts. If you look up into the sky, starting around 8:30 at any, any of the next five weeks or so, you'll be able to see Mars, Jupiter, Saturn, and Venus. And if you've got a telescope, you can find Neptune and Uranus, Uranus as well. Oh, yes.
I literally took a picture of the sky before I walked into City Hall, because I was like, that looks like a planet. It's so bright.
Yes.
It's beautiful.
So I think January 21st is, is the date that I've seen for, you know, go out on that night in particular, but any, any night leading up to or following that.
Is this one of those 500-year events or something?
It's pretty rare. I don't know if it's 500 years, but it's, it's worth noting.
Thank you, Bill.
We should use the Promega Observatory.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Couple of shout outs to city staff. Wanted to thank Building Inspection for very quickly resolving a resident concern. The blue light that blinks in the Pick and Save parking lot was blinking directly into somebody's window, so that has been turned off during the night hours, which is good. And then we also had a, the intersection of Greenway Cross and Coho Drive, it's very busy and has some issues, and our Transportation Engineer has found, what I think is a really clever, it's gonna be a temporary roundabout, is the plan, to put it in, it may be even as soon as the next month or so, depending on when supplies are delivered and the weather, but, but try a temporary roundabout, test it out for at least six months, see if it actually solves the problem, and then potentially look at budgeting for a permanent roundabout if that truly is a solution to the intersection. And then I believe that that equipment can then be moved somewhere else, so we would be able to reuse it. And I think those kind of temporary measures has some potential in the city to test out ideas for how to make things safer, which is a real economical way to, to do some traffic calming and to really test things out, which you don't always get to do with streets. So we're excited about, about that, and hopefully there'll be updates once we have that installed. And I'm sure we'll, we'll report back to the council about how that, how that goes. Jay?
Yeah. I looked at the picture you sent out with that device, and I wonder, like, if somebody, so the complaint has been that people are just tearing through the intersection. So if they tear through the intersection and they crash into this thing, do they destroy it? Does it cause permanent damage?
My understanding is it would be very damaging to their car. I, it's pretty hard plastic, and it's, it's bolted to the ground in some way. So, yeah, it would be, I think it would be destructive to the car.
We see.
Well, that doesn't stop people necessarily. I just, I just...
It'll be an interesting experiment.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's maybe, if we put it out there and it gets destroyed, are we gonna have to buy another one?
I don't think it would be completely destroyed.
So, so these, if you think of the, when you go through like a road construction project, you see those about four-foot-high, three-foot-high, thin, plastic bollards that are affixed to the, to the pavement? That's generally what it'll be. It'll be a, you know, a series of, of these things that are fixed.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yep, exactly.
Yeah, that wasn't clear from the picture. It looked, honestly, what I thought it was, was one of those expanding balls that, that was bolted to the ground. So, all right, so this is something a little more, with a little more heft to it.
Yeah, yeah. And we do already, we did already try a similar arrangement on a temporary basis over actually near your district or in your district on Sign Road, just north of East Cheryl. We were seeing cars cutting to go northbound in the southbound lane to access a property there. So we actually have some of those, very similar temporary bollards there to control or restrict that movement, and to see if there are any other negative impacts associated with potentially closing that off permanently. So this is, those, that was the first incident of us trying something on a temporary basis. Now the Greenway Cross and Coho intersection will be a second incident, and then we anticipate that we'll be utilizing this sort of philosophy moving forward in a number of other applications.
And then one last thing, the Greater Heights Climbing Gym, I'll just put another plug in for them. They're off Rimrock Road in South Dale neighborhood. It is an outstanding gym. It is, I'm there at least once a week, and it is always crowded, and it's wonderful. So, so happy to have them in the community, and I hope people that are interested in climbing will go check it out, because it's a really great place to, to learn climbing if you're new to it.
Okay. Good to know. Okay. So, next, District Three.
Yeah. District Three's been pretty peaceful, so we don't have a lot of exciting stuff going on right now. But there was a, there was a complaint from a resident about fireworks happening on New Year's Eve. And so I started looking into that, because the question, one of the questions that was brought up is, why do we have temporary fireworks stands in the city when we're not allowed to fire them off? So, there is an answer to that question. So, there is an answer to that question. And the answer, I, I met with the Fire Department, we had a good conversation with Chad and Mike. And the answer to that question is, the state of Wisconsin has two different classifications of fireworks. So, when it just says fireworks, that means stuff that goes up into the air and explodes. There is a, there is a separate category called novelty fireworks, which includes stuff that might spray sparks up into the air, or the handheld sparklers, or the little cars that you can light off and go down, you know, they'll travel about 30 feet or so and maybe have a little whistle in them that makes a lot of noise. So, the, the temporary roadside stands that pop up in Pittsburgh, we have fewer of them now than we used to. It used to be a $30 fee for the permit. Now it's a $500 fee. And since that's happened, we only have two people, we only have two places that come and offer that. And supposedly, according to the Fire Department's inspections, they only sell these novelty firework items, or at least that's all that the Fire Department's been able to observe on the tables when they go by and do their inspection. So, I am going to be looking at proposing an ordinance revision to basically ban the sale of the novelty fireworks within the city of Pittsburgh. The city of Madison already did this, and so did the city of Sun Prairie. So, it just makes sense that we should follow suit with them. But, we can't debate that tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I'll bring it to you in the next couple of weeks. Go ahead. Oh, the other thing that, that I'm working on, I don't know if any of you have been following the situation with Ridgeland Farms out near Blue Mounds. But Ridgeland Farms is a facility that breeds beagles for medical research. They typically have about 3,000 animals there that they're raising. They are kept in cages that are generally stacked three-high or four-high in certain places. There, so in 2021, there are three, there were three people who basically broke into the facility to get, because they, they suspected this was going on. They took a bunch of pictures, took a bunch of video, and some of it's on YouTube right now. If you're gonna go look for those videos, I would be prepared because some of it is pretty harsh. There are dogs that are having eyes removed without anesthetic. There's all kinds of things that are going on at this facility. So...
What is it for?
I'm getting there. So, those, the three people who broke in were in the process of being prosecuted. And then mysteriously, at the beginning of last year, the owners of the farm decided to drop the charges. Probably because they didn't want this information coming out in open court. So, the, where this was headed is there, there are, there was a hearing in October to basically force the Dane County District Attorney to prosecute Ridgeland Farms. And just last week, the court ruled that the district attorney needs to do this investigation and prosecute if necessary. So, that's something that, that's something that I think is important. Where we come into this is, some communities in Wisconsin have passed an ordinance that basically is trying to prevent these types of facilities from existing in their municipality at all. So I took, there's some draft language that was written by an attorney for Dane for Dogs. And I ran that past our city attorney, and she said, no, this is not, this isn't really enforceable the way it's written. So, I've, I talked with her about that to some degree. So I'm also going to be bringing forward an ordinance, probably in about a month, that will hopefully have an enforceable way of being able to keep these types of facilities from happening. The challenge is writing it in such a way that we don't, we don't harm our existing, our existing farmers. And we also don't want to, to shut down legitimate dog breeders. But for the most part, they aren't going to be having 3,000 dogs that they're breeding at once. So, those are, those are a couple of things that I'm working on, and hopefully you'll be able to see those soon.
Okay.
I just had a couple of things. One, we did want to bring forth a MLK Day proclamation. And I dropped the ball on that one, I apologize. Alder, Maldonado, and myself will be sponsoring that, so I have it ready for next meeting. Will be about a week late, but better late than never.
Okay.
So, on that one. Also, the Mad for Reading Campaign kickoff and Family Literacy Night at Southside Elementary is coming up. Some of the District 3 residents live in, like, specifically like the Southdale neighborhood, probably attend Southside. So basically, what it is, is really a literacy night at Southside Elementary on National Reading Day, which is January 23rd, 2025. And this will be a Madison district-wide event that aims to inspire the love of reading in our community and promote family and involvement in literacy. If you haven't been following MMSD, the two things are doubling down on our literacy and mathematic achievement rates. So that event from, it's about 5 to 7, you have a registration, a press conference where Dr. Gothard and also Cindy Green will talk, and community leaders will talk a little bit. And then from, and then there'll also be an opportunity for activities for families and community members to engage in together. So this will take place at Southside. If anybody's interested, I can forward the invite to the rest of council. Mayor Ratafatta forwarded to Jay and myself, since the, a lot of the, some of the students who attend there live in our district in Southdale. So I've registered and plan to be there that night. So if others want to, just let me know. And then lastly, not necessarily a District 3 thing related, but I'm all about mentoring, and I'm all about the, the young people. So, the Rise Initiative at Madison Area Technical College, and Rise stands for Retention Initiatives and Student Engagement. It's basically, they are seeking mentors. So if anyone has the, the capacity to mentor a young person, college-age Madison, well, either college-age or non-traditional college-age too, because it is at Madison College. I have some sheets here, you can like scan the QR code, you can be matched with the mentor. Or, there's an option to like engage more and like, kind of, if you already have someone in mind that you wanted to work with, they are looking for individuals to mentor. I do do this myself. Even as board chair, I have a couple mentees that I work with, and I find it to be like, just a great experience to have with the young people in the community and offer them broad perspectives as all of the individuals here, and then also city staff. I'm sure they can learn a lot from you all. So, that'll conclude my remarks from District 3.
Thank you. District 4?
Not any real big updates. I did just want to bring out, apparently Donald and I are really into reading this month. Madison Reading Project, which is near our Pittsburgh boundaries, but not within Pittsburgh. But they are also, I think, I think they're partially sponsoring that event. But they also just wanted to put out, they serve all of Dane County. So if you go to their website, they provide free books to young children all across our county. And so, any child from birth to their fifth birthday, they're eligible for a free book being mailed to them. So if people want to go, that's another nice way to get your paws on a book. But other than that, pretty quiet in District 4.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I haven't heard anything either going on in District 4.
Okay. Still, yeah, celebrating, they call it. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other announcement? Nope? Okay, so the next committee of the whole meeting will be January, okay?
I would like to, just a couple of things about Committee of the Whole.
Okay, no, I want to say January 22nd, so.
Yes. Our Committee of the Whole meeting, because of the Wednesday, the first of the month this week, this month was Wednesday.
Yeah, it's weird.
Our Committee of the Whole meeting is not after council next time. It is actually next week, Wednesday. So, next week, January 22nd, is Committee of the Whole. That is not, that is actually true, that's right. I've decided to move it up to 6:00 PM. So 6:00 PM on January 22nd next week.
Oh, send an email too, because I have it set.
I will send an email. My second thing I wanted to ask is that our neck, our March, our March Committee of the Whole is over spring break. It's on March 26th. I have a conflict because of that, and I assume there might be some other conflicts because of a spring break overlap. And I know there's some staff conflicts. I'm curious if anyone would be open to moving the March Committee of the Whole to the 19th of March.
Is that spring break? That's outside of spring break, yeah?
That's before, the week before spring break.
Sounds great.
So, if anyone has any objection to that, please let me know ASAP. Otherwise, I will plan to have that be moved, so, because we have a couple months' notice.
Are we gonna do the, like, the, the early start time too again? Like the 6 instead of the?
I think I'm gonna move towards that. Yeah, I, I prefer that, and so I think we're gonna, we're gonna have that be more of the norm.
Oh, we are gonna, we are proposing to change the, the time permanently?
I think that might be the standard time. I, I see some nodding heads, so, yeah, okay. But not to extend the length of the meeting, just to start earlier. So that's, just to be clear.
Well, I'm, I...
The intention is not for it to be a three-hour meeting.
I am often still working at 6.
Oh, okay, that's good. Would 6:30 work?
6:30 would be better.
6:30? Okay, good to know.
Rock and roll.
I'll, I'll check if we can still adjust the, but we can move towards 6:30. Thank you.
Okay, and next common council meeting will be January 28th?
Move for adjournment.